Good evening. This is the call to order for the Canal Winchester City Council Work Session for Monday, August 18th. Roll call, please.
Ms. Amick.
Present?
Ms. Amick.
Here.
Mr. Bennett?
Here.
Mr. Busker?
Here.
Mr. McGoughlin?
Here.
Mr. Moore?
Here.
Mr. Shea?
Present.
Awesome, thank you. Also in attendance this evening, we have Mayor Steger, City Administrator Matt Peoples, Development Director Lucas Hare, Construction Director Bill Sims, and Law Director Thad Boggs. That will take us to the reports of city staff. Mr. Sims.
Thank you, Mrs. Amick. We're still working on some gender road stuff. We're missing three streetlights we're waiting to come in, so we can finish that up. And then, you know, we've got some paperwork to do. So, that project is continuing, but for the most part, it's complete at this point and functioning. The Hedworths Project is continuing to work on utility relocation. We have pretty much most of the underground out of the way. We're actually moving blowers for the sewage digesters to another location. So that's what they're going to be working on all of this week. But, we're moving along pretty well, anticipating first building demolition to start occurring here at the end of the month, so seeing a little more action out there. The 25 Street Program, the paving is complete. We do have a couple punchless items and some manhole adjustments to wrap that project up. Winchester Boulevard is actively working out there. We, actually tomorrow, we'll be doing subgrade stabilization. That'll take the rest of the week, and then we can start building the roadway up next week. So a lot of activity there. The maintenance of traffic's actually working a little better than I anticipated, quite frankly. Everyone seems to have kind of figured out how to get out of the shopping center, and the traffic is flowing pretty decently on Winchester Boulevard. Green Gate Boulevard, Strausser Pavilion will be building that roadway. We had pre-construction meeting last week, and it'll be mobilizing to the site next week, or, I'm sorry, later this week. So we'll start to see some activity out on Green Gate between Diley Road and existing Green Gate Drive. And we have the East Waterloo Street Storm Sewer going out to bid, starting on Wednesday. Bid opening will be on September 5th, and hoping to have the legislation to council on September 15th to award that project, so we can get that going. And we're, tomorrow, we have a walkthrough of the 90 percent plans for McGill Park Phase 2B, so we'll be looking at that as well, so. On the private side of things, the library's continuing to work, starting to see a lot more finished-type work starting to happen with driveways and sidewalks, and it seemed like they're starting to spread some topsoil and things of that, that nature. And right-of-way work, the gas company did complete the service lowerings on Hemingford Drive in anticipation of our stabilization of that road. And we're actually waiting on Columbia Gas to get out and move a gas main on Diley Road at Green Gate Drive. They have to do a small relocation at that location for our storm sewer, so they're, they're apparently ready to go. We're just waiting on them to show up. Any questions? Yes, sir.
Just wanted to let you know, we've got, or I've gotten a ton of compliments from the work that was done on Washington Street. Looks great. The paving's wonderful. A little sad that somebody drove mud across it already, but...
Yeah, that took no time at all.
Yeah, that was quick, but, uh, looks great. The CW Evelyn also looks phenomenal, so really, really excited to see that. I do have one question, I don't know really if it's a construction services question, but the, the entrance and exit ramps for 33 coming on agenda, who's, who takes care of those? Is that us? Is that Columbus? Just as far as like, I, I've had a lot of people talk about litter and just stuff like that.
That kind of maintenance, for the most part, is ours. You know, we, we take care of the surface of the road, basically, and guardrails and signage. Obviously, you know, we take care of roadside mowing along 33 and do the trash pickup out there as well, so, yeah, that would be for us.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
I have a couple of questions as well. You'd mentioned the streetlights that are still to come. Are there any streetlights in the roundabout that will be, need to be installed, and have those been ordered?
Yes. So, we will have new street lighting. So we're removing the old, they weren't the Dorchester that we have downtown, but something similar that had been installed in the early 90s. So we're removing those. We'll actually be installing the taller pole that you see like on Diley Road and other parts of Gender Road through the roundabout area on both sides. So they are, they are ordered, and, you know, that is a long lead time item on that project, so, you know, that'll probably be something that's finished possibly during the winter.
Okay.
But, yeah.
And then, did you have a start date on the Hemingford construction?
I do not. I have received a proposal from Strausser to do the work, so, you know, that's kind of our next step. So I want to take a look at that, see if we need to make any adjustments, but it's basically a week-long project, and so, we don't have a start date yet. My anticipation is, I'd like to get it done in September. A lot of it's probably going to have to do with the schedule from Phoenix.
Sure.
They're, they're kind of bouncing around, so, you know, hopefully we can find a little window that might just fit just right for them, so.
And then the last was the logo, which does look great, but someone asked about the orientation. Is that centered so it's directly north and south? Is that...
It is not. It's centered, if High Street were in north, so...
Okay.
You know, we looked at all the different options.
Someone asked, and I didn't have a good answer.
Whether Waterloo was the primary road, or High Street, should it go north and south? And, you know, so we had, ultimately decided to line it up essentially with High Street as kind of the primary road.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else? Mrs. Amick?
This is probably not the case, but do the light poles not being in or not being up have any impact on the grants that we got that have to be closed by a certain date?
They do not. We, we, you know, we anticipated, basically, that that's the longest lead time item. You know, the overall duration of the roads is actually kind of short, you know, compared to some of the other ones we have done, so, you know, we knew that those would be the last items. It's, you know, it's been a very common problem, quite frankly, at this point. It's about five months to get a light once it's ordered, so it's, it's a little bit of a headache on a lot of jobs.
Have we ordered additional lights preparing for our winter season of the box coming out?
So, we have some lights. Yeah, we, we, I don't know how many we have, but we, I know we do have spares that are available, you know, to go up when there, you know, things happen, so.
Okay. And then my last question, and Mr. Peoples, maybe you're the one that has to field this one. The CW that's in the middle looks fantastic, but I thought it was going to be an inlay? And it's, it's a sticker? It's a vinyl?
No. So, we, we looked originally, at one point, one of our initial ideas was something that was more like, like the bronze plaques that we use for different things as an inlay. There were some severe limitations there. One of them was diameter. About the largest hole we could saw on a pavement without basically buying a saw was 60 inches, which, and it had to be in a band, so you were looking at an actual medallion of about four feet, which in that intersection would look really, really small. That medallion doesn't look huge, but it's actually 12 feet in diameter. It's pretty sizable. So, you know, this kind of afforded us some greater, you know, sizes that we could work on. I think we're looking at, at actually adding a ring to that, doing something for the upcoming bicentennial on that, and we could push it out to 17 feet, you know, at that point. So, you know, we looked at the plaque, and it just, some of the constraints it had, you know, I mean, there's a little concern with ultimately, how does that wear under traffic as well? You know, I know how the thermoplastic material, it does have a life, but it's not, it can be changed or replaced or repaired versus a bronze medallion. Medallion would be, you know, a significant issue if it started to wear down, so.
So I guess my final question would be, I'm sure there was a cost savings on that. Is that the same type of material that we use for the Dora stickers?
It's similar. It's not the same, but it's, it's a similar idea. It's a little bit different. The Dora stickers don't, they literally are kind of like glued down.
Okay. That's why I wanted to make sure it was not the same, because those kind of feel...
Could be the same material as the ceroline or edge striping that's thermoplastic on the roads.
It's, it's heated to the point where it's actually fused to the surface of the asphalt. So if you went out there with a chipping hammer or something and picked away at it, when you knocked a piece off, if you looked at it, it would be actually the asphalt that came up with it, the surface of the asphalt.
So what's the life expectancy?
You know, it's, uh...
You're guessing.
I can't guarantee, I don't know. You know, there's different conditions.
It's like a human being, you just don't know.
Honestly...
It's moody?
10 years, maybe 15. I doubt more than 15. You know, it's, again, it's not too dissimilar to some of the striping we, we've done. I mean, we've had some, you know, we have some school symbols that go 10 years easily, things of that nature. You know, it's, uh, there are some options to repair it if there's damage, like from, say, a snowplow or something, you know, occasionally you'll see something like that, so.
Is it, is it warranted by the manufacturer?
Not against, like, damage. You know, and they warranty their product, I'd have to look at it, but that would be a failure of the product, not its application, basically.
Well, thank you for hearing all my questions, Mr. Sims.
Sure.
Mr. Shea?
The Columbia main line that you mentioned, is that going to interrupt traffic out there? Like, or are they just going to shoot under and run new pipe?
So, their work will not interrupt traffic. They're actually back behind the curb a good distance, or they're like in the bike path, roughly.
Okay.
And it's a very short stretch. They're like 70 feet long or something like that, the width of the intersection. So, we will have some impacts to traffic out there, as we have to remove the curb and gutter that's there now to build the entrance into the new road. So there will be times when one lane northbound will be blocked while we're doing that interface with the existing roadway.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else for Mr. Sims?
I will share with the rest of council. Mr. Buskerk and I attended the Council Connect on Saturday, and there was a lot of discussion about the roundabout, and, I don't know, maybe a little anxiousness about it. So I asked Mr. Sims if we can prepare some communication, a simulation, something that we can get out in advance of the roundabout opening at Winchester Boulevard, that maybe if we can get that out there early enough and people can see how it's going to flow, it'll make for an easy transition. So, he's going to work on that. So thank you for taking a look at that.
You're welcome. I'm, I'm certain we can put together some materials that will make it be clearer about how the traffic flows will have to go. You know, when we built the Gender Road Roundabout at Lythopolis Road, you know, we actually built a webpage dedicated to that. I don't know we need that much, but we could have, you know, certainly a page within our own site now to, to, you know, share some light, some kind of flow diagrams, things like that. How do you get from here to there, sort of thing? So, it will be, there will be some learning curve there, I'm sure.
Thank you very much. Yeah, we learned who liked McDonald's better and who liked Wendy's better, as we were talking about how to get from one to the other. So, so thank you for doing that.
You're welcome.
Anything else for Mr. Sims? Okay, moving on to request for council action. The first item is Resolution 25-041. Clerk, will you read the resolution, please?
A resolution to amend the rules of the Canal Winchester City Council.
Thank you. Mr. Boggs, did you have a couple of things that you wanted to add? I have a couple of questions for you as well.
Um, I'm going to write it.
Okay, the first...
This is just the result of our meeting.
From the Rules Committee. And the only thing that I, the first thing I want to address is, under Rule 8, you had questions about, and maybe the Rules Committee can actually answer this. It was, it's Rule 8b, B1C. And your question for your comment number three, this has not been implemented in the four years I've been Law Director. Do you want to remove it, or do you want to start to follow it? So I guess I'll kind of lean towards the Rules Committee to sort of help clarify that. Basically, the way it's, it's reading after the red lines, "The work session may include areas of focus, including but not limited to finance, economic development, public services, and public safety. While the work session of focus, other items may be brought before council as needed." So, did you still have a question, Mr. Boggs, about whether you wanted this to be removed or start to follow? So, Mrs. Amick, I'll kind of lean on you to...
Yeah, so I'll address it real quick. The first, the reason why this originally came is to kind of limit what we were discussing at work sessions in the event that we did have somebody, I think the example used was if somebody came in and was attacking us on something that was more personal versus work-related. So it was to make sure that we were identifying that our, our business is city business. That was part of the original conversation, but it was to kind of narrow down the focuses of what we could talk about. And it does say, and I just want to make sure that second line is, "While the work sessions may include these areas of focus, other items may be brought to council." So I just want to make sure that's in there.
Right.
But Mr. Boggs helped us write it and gave us some information on an incident that occurred in another area.
Right. And so, in, in that particular section, what I was commenting about was how it mandated or was prescriptive in having the first work session of the month focus on finance and economic development, and the second focusing on service and safety, which we've not done, at least in my experience here. And so that, that was an attempt, yes, to sort of note that the work sessions are free to focus on particular things, but not trying to set it out, you know, first work session of the month and second work session of the month if we're not going to follow it. And then, yes, as Councilmember Amick said, in terms of public comment, typically, we don't take public comment in work sessions, but if you were to choose to, you could, and it would need to be germane to the topics being discussed and not just sort of out in left field, because it's your time to work with, you know, with each other.
And to Mr. Boggs' point, we were never following the rules.
Yeah.
Maybe...
At least that way.
Maybe when you were in there a long time ago, because you're much older.
I think it was developed initially because council used to have standing committees, and then went to the work session, and so it was a, an evolution from subject-based standing committees to then work sessions that would have sort of regular subject-based focuses, but it has not been that way since at least 2020.
I, I think it's hard to, to focus on the first work session, you know, being relative to certain things in the second one, only because the, at the speed of which legislation moves and has to move. So I think, I understand that the point. So I guess, is the way it's currently worded what the committee intended? Mrs. Amick, is that, like, this is how you want it? Because if that's comments, he says, "Do you want to remove this or start to follow this practice?"
There was, there was lots of conversations. So you want to remove the whole thing?
Well, I think...
Yeah, my, my comment was just, do you want to remove the, the...
The order of operations.
Language stricken through, yeah.
So we can reduce it down to...
The lines that aren't drawn through.
And while you're pondering, I'm gonna, Mr. Bennett has been patiently waiting to have a comment, so go ahead and I'll come back to you.
That sounds unlikely. The only challenge with taking it out, so I think this was probably, to your point, it was a holdover probably from when we switched from committees to, to just general work session. However, council still has, within these rules, the right to flip back to committee-focused subcommittees as opposed to a general work session. And while I agree, general work session probably flows better than maybe some of the old committees used to, if we, is this a nugget in here for guidance on how those meetings would be structured if we went back to the other structure of subcommittees? So, is this notes of economic development is the first, and finance, or safety and service on the second meeting, if we went back to subcommittees, then that would become relevant, correct? Of how we wanted to do it?
Wouldn't we just change the rules, then?
Yeah, I...
I'm just, it's a sort of, it's a, you know, on its own, it's weird, but when you think about how it ties back to how the meetings are run overall, it sort of...
It's kind, it's kind of a rule that ties your hands, and I think removing it gives you a little bit more flexibility. You can still do that, you know, but it's not a hard, fast rule.
And you'll forgive me without, I did not go back over the original minutes of it, but somebody during our meeting had requested that we keep it in, and there was a logical reason that they gave, but I cannot remember at this point, because it's been a while to Alex. Do you remember? Because somebody asked us to keep that language in there during the Rules Committee.
Hmm, I don't think it was me. Well...
I thought it was you. Yeah, I, somebody had required, like, wanted to keep the language because it provided some structure and stability to our meetings.
I, I think...
But I'm okay either way. Like, I have no love to it.
Your earlier comment about if, if a speaker, who again, normally we don't have, you know, public comments during this, if it were to go completely off the rails and off topic, the presiding officer, whether that's me or Will, have, we have an obligation to get it back on track. That's part of our job. So I, what, what's your preference?
If, if the, if the council wants to remove it, it's fine. I mean, I'm always willing to listen. We left it in there originally because somebody had asked, but we can modify it to be what's appropriate for us.
So I think I'm hearing a general consensus of remove it?
So what would we, we have, the work sessions have to stay in there. Do we, we need to finish the statement? So it was, work sessions will be divided into two areas of focus. That is not what we are currently doing.
Now it says, "The work sessions may include areas of focus, including but not limited to finance, economic development, public services, and public safety."
Right.
That's, that's period.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's perfectly stated.
But then it's, the next sentence just says, "But it also may include other areas if council chooses so," because otherwise, are you limiting yourself if you only go with the first sentence? That's why the second sentence was added originally.
But it says, "Not limited to." So it's like, we can talk about green grass if we wanted to.
Sure.
So...
So do we want to remove the second sentence and just leave?
That would be my recommendation.
Okay. Yeah, if nobody else has any issues, that's fine.
Any thoughts? Okay. Mr. Boggs, did we make that clear as mud for you?
So, I, we are, we are removing what's stricken through, like, we're following the, the red line? Is that what the consensus emerged?
You're keeping the red line, you're removing the last sentence totally. So you're only leaving in, "The work sessions may include areas of focus, including but not limited to finance, economic development, public services, and public safety." Period.
And then taking out the second sentence? Okay.
So you're taking out, "While the work sessions will include..."
Will include.
"...include these areas of focus, other items may be brought before council as needed?"
Correct. Because what Laura was saying is, if the top says, "But not limited to..."
It's redundant. It's redundant.
I just want to make sure, I just want to clarify and understand, because I was very muddy over here. I'm good.
Okay.
Okay.
So then, Jordan, for the record, B1C, you'll have the, the last sentence stricken. Don't let him get choked up on his birthday.
You all right, sir? Do you need a helmet? I'm fine.
That's in a polity.
Sound great.
Now I'm getting old.
Are you seriously swallowing?
Literally.
Mayor, please feel free if you need to step out, that's fine. So Jordan, are you good with... Okay, so moving on then, the next item or the next question I had was on 11G, Mr. Boggs. And it's, I just want to make sure that I understand this particular item. So, if something is on the work session agenda, and it does not get moved to full council because it's tabled or whatever, we do not need to take an amendment action on the city council agenda to remove it, it just disappears the next meeting?
Right.
Okay, perfect. Does anybody else have questions about that? I just needed to kind of walk that through in my head. Okay, Mr. Shea, are you good?
I'm confused as always. It just means that if we don't move forward with something on work session, it just disappears. We don't have to make any type of...
Right, that you don't have to then...
It just dies, yeah.
Yeah. And during city council...
Or at least it doesn't go to, you know, maybe it's something that you want to talk at, at another work session, and so you, before moving it on to council's agenda. But just for purposes of having the council agenda ready to go, everything is always on there. But, this is just to clarify that if something is not moved from work session onto the full council agenda, you don't need to open up your council meeting by amending the agenda to reflect the action that you didn't take 20 minutes earlier.
Thank you.
Is there an appropriate way to address that during the city council session? Do you just skip over it, or do you need to say, just simply, this was not moved forward from work session?
Right, yeah. I think by and large, that's what we've been doing, but it always comes up, and...
Yeah.
From time to time, and this is just to add clarity.
Thank you. Any other questions about this item? We'll move on and see if anybody has questions about any of the other council rules or any clarity on anything. I want to thank the Rules Committee for the work that you've done on this and getting this updated for us. Any other questions?
I think you do need to schedule another Rules Committee, and it probably should be, probably in about a month or so, but includes like three new people or three people that will be carrying forward.
I think that, I don't think it's required, but it's, you're supposed to have one, once a year.
Right.
So in 2025, is that...
Did you guys meet this year?
No.
We did not meet this year.
No.
I mean, it's, I don't, can't remember if that's in the charter of the council meeting, but, yeah.
Just, we haven't had one this year, so if we decide to have one, then just need a collective group to do it.
Oh...
Maybe some people who haven't, so that they can...
Is this the time to point out other things in the rules that maybe we...
Absolutely. This is for Resolution 25-041. Anything on the rules? This is for Resolution 25-041, anything on the rules?
Okay. 11C has been on there for a while, and it's, it is one of our rules, it is not a rule we actively practice. Do we want to leave that there? Do we want to have a, like, um?
I guess, am I wrong? Is that, would that be for the next Rules Committee?
Yes, that would go on the next Rules Committee.
These are the changes that have already been.
Do you want to stand on the next one and you can?
Well, no, we can talk about it right now. Right, Mr. Boggs?
I think we're, I think we're approving what's been, what's on the agenda.
So the Rules Committee met in September of, of 2024. They are bringing forward their recommendations to make, um, these, these changes to the current rules. What you see redlined are the changes that they're recommending. So I think, I think what Mrs. Amos is saying is that the next Rules Committee should work to bring forward their changes instead of doing it here in the meeting.
Well, and that's there, um, but since we're talking about it, I figured we could talk about it, but if.
As long as we're, I mean, the question is just to be allowed, because normally they always told us we had to wait until the committee meeting.
I mean, you're, you're council, so, so, you know, the Rules Committee is there to try to make your lives easier as council, but, yeah, here we are, so if you want to talk about it now.
Yeah, I think making them without an item on the agenda would be different than with it before as an item.
I was per saying, are we, can we modify it?
Well, and I just, I mean, I want to point out that that's on there, and that's not something that we have done, we've done it a couple of times while I've been on council, but not consistently. And if we're going to have it as a rule, we should either do it, and if we're not going to do it, we should take it out so that we're not in, being inconsistent with our own rules that we have set forth.
Yeah, I, I agree. Maybe the question we start with, though, is, is it achievable before we just squash it all together?
So 11C, I believe, was a change that some of the members on this council made five years ago, four years ago? So that was at the request of council at the time, maybe it was.
That would be you two. You were the only ones here back then.
No, I haven't, I think it was for three then. You were on there.
No, he wasn't.
Hush now, I was trying to drag him in.
I think it's something to revisit to see, um, consult with staff and see if this is, if this rule is something we can achieve, and if not, then it should be removed in the next adjustment.
It used to say.
But I would like to get back to that.
I wouldn't mind it either, but.
It said Thursday and Friday, if I recall correctly. And the city, at the time that we changed this originally, did give us their hesitation on it because they said there are so many things that come in.
There were concerns.
Late, yeah, that they weren't sure they could post it all accordingly, and they didn't want that to be the hesitation. I remember the conversation.
I, I remember it too, and the, the, um, I think the, the viewpoint was that when council gets it on Friday at four, five, um, it's hard to have time. If you have weekend activities, then you might have to read 400 pages over the weekend. And so I, I think, Mr. Shea, keep me honest here, but I think that was around the general reason why we wanted the topics to be out and available on Wednesday, right? I think that's the way.
Tuesday, that's what it says.
Well, no, you have to have your topics in by Tuesday, but, um, it says, "A draft agenda shall be provided to council and posted to the city's website no later than end of day Wednesday," so that we would at least know what's going, coming forward on the agenda. And then the final approved agenda would come out on Friday at noon. So that's what it says. But I, you know, I know that we've, um, we probably all have brought something late to the table and didn't get it in by Tuesday, so there's probably one thing. And then I think the response from city staff was, so much can happen between Wednesday and Friday that it would just create some extra confusion. And then, like I said, on the, um, opposite side of that argument was that council was saying, but we need more time to prepare for Monday's council meeting when we don't get the documentation in time. Does that sound familiar? I mean, that's what I think has happened, so.
And I do recall that the city took a time period where they were getting them done in the timeframe that we gave them, and they did tell us they were getting little to no feedback. So I think that was part of the reason we've seen the shift a little bit back to the normal schedule.
I mean, the, the rules are what the rules are, and technically, we should be adhering to this, or I guess the staff should be adhering to this. How important is it to council to change the rule? And that's not necessarily a huge debate for tonight, but something to think about if you do want to modify that particular rule.
But to Mr. Bennett's point, I think that two, the two, the VP, President, you two should have a conversation with city and just see, is there an expectation that we can establish that's feasible for all? And then we can look at changing the rules to be appropriate.
Okay, we can do that. Okay, anything else on the, um, rules or the proposed changes to the rules? Again, I want to thank the Rules Committee for the work that you've, um, done, and thank you to Mr. Boggs for, um, providing your input as well. Okay, hearing no additional comment, is there a motion to move Resolution 25-041 to full council?
Sumoed.
Second.
Motion made by Mrs. Amos, second by Mr. Bennett. Roll call, please.
Ms. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Busker?
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Ms. Amos?
Yes. Thank you. The next item is Resolution 25-042. Clerk, will you read the resolution, please?
A resolution to authorize the mayor administrator to enter into a financial support agreement with the Canowen Chester Historical Society.
Thank you. Mr. Peoples.
Thank you, Ms. Amick. I think this is a topic that you brought up at the last, um, work session meeting. But the, as you know, the, the Historical Society is going through a restoration of the Cheney Mill. The, some of that, it does include a, a public sidewalk across the front from, along, excuse me, along, um, Oak Street, uh, to connect up with that, with the High Street sidewalk as well. Also, as just part of their effort, we've been supporting that project for some time through some administrative items, but this is a, something a little bit different that, that has been discussed with, uh, with, with mayor and council.
Thank you, Mr. Peoples. Questions?
Um, I've got a couple. First being, um, for the money that we would supply in this grant, is that coming from the general fund or bed tax fund or?
We have it proposed in the appropriation ordinance that is on third reading tonight to come out of the bed tax fund.
Okay. And that would be like the council's portion or?
Just the, the fund of, of unencumbered funds in there.
Oh, I understand, okay.
Not necessarily out of a budget, so just basically out of a savings account in that fund, if that makes sense. That's why I like to call it.
And just to clarify, this is a, this is a one-time, uh, payment or grant that we're offering just for the beautification of the property?
And the sidewalk, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Anything else?
Uh, yes. What's the balance of the bed tax fund?
I, I will have to look it up.
Okay.
Can I have it at, uh?
Yes. No, that's fine.
A hundred thousand will not take that, uh, that, uh, balance down on, below uncomfortable levels for Ms. Jackson.
Which means there's enough in there. We'll still get it from you, please.
Yep.
Um, and then when we say sidewalks, are we, did I catch it, they're going down Oak Street?
Yes, on the north side of Oak Street to their, uh, the edge of their property.
Okay.
So similar to what we did with the, um, with the library, we ended up putting that public sidewalk in along Gropphorn Road. Uh, this is along those lines. We didn't have this, uh, this portion of it budgeted, so we're doing it, proposing as a reimbursement.
Okay, thank you.
Right now, you kind of have to walk on a little bit of a hillside in high heels, and this is going to be a huge.
Additionally, the sidewalk will be on, they'll, they'll do it on the private property. It won't be all, all be able to do it within the right of way. Uh, they'll provide a, a sidewalk easement for that to be able to, to cover that, um, but that's why it's kind of not a public project either.
Further questions? Hearing none, the chair will make a motion to move Resolution 25-042 to full council.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Busker. Roll call, please.
Ms. Amick?
Yes.
Mr. Busker?
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Abstain.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Ms. Amos?
Abstain.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving to the next item is Resolution 25-043. Clerk, will you read the resolution, please?
A resolution indicating what services the city of Canowen Chester will provide to 111.2 acres of land, more or less for the annexation known as the Canowen Family Farms Annexation by David Hodge, agent for the petitioners.
Thank you. Mr. Herr.
Thank you, Mrs. Amick. Uh, this resolution, um, the property owner filed an annexation petition with the Franklin County Commissioners on August 11th. This is the first step in our process of an annexation, um, where we state which services will be available. This property is 111.2 acres on the south side of Hayes Road, immediately west of the Miller Farms property that was rezoned earlier this year. This is an undeveloped farm property at this point. There's no homes on the property, um, so this is indicating that upon annexation, we'll be able to service that farm property.
Thank you. Questions from council? Mr. Shea?
I don't see storm sewer listed anywhere here. Is that part of the services that we offer? Like, should that be in here?
It is. There are other, this is a standard resolution that we use, so there are other services. We'll provide building, um, clerk court services, storm sewer services.
All municipal services.
Yes, we'll provide all municipal services, but this is just a standard resolution that we use for that purpose.
I was just thinking about the pipes in the ground and.
Yeah, there's no, I mean, there's not like a petition ditch or anything here that we'd be taking on. Uh, we're not taking any road right of way as part of this annexation. We're annexing to the south lot line, so there's no additional infrastructure that we'd be taking on with, with this project.
Thank you.
Further questions? Okay, hearing none, is there a motion to move Resolution 25-043 to full council?
Sumoed. Second.
Motion made by Mr. Moore, second by Mr. Shea. Roll call, please.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Ms. Amick?
Yes.
Ms. Amis?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Busker?
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on to Ordinance 25-021. Clerk, will you read the ordinance, please?
An ordinance approving the final development plan for Kroger as part of the Green Gate, Green Gate Plaza Plan Development.
Thank you. Mr. Herr.
Uh, I'll actually defer to Mr. Moore to present this. He's worked, uh, intricately on the plans and getting Kroger to update plans since our planning and zoning commission meeting, so he has a brief presentation he'll give on the development plans.
Mr. Moore?
Welcome. Thank you. Um, I want to be talking about the final development plan that was recommended to city council for approval for Kroger, um, here at the 14.2 acres on the, um, east side of Dally Road. Uh, the overall Green Gate Plaza site, which city council should be familiar with, is highlighted in the blue bounding box. Uh, the, um, entire property, again, is 17.9 acres. Um, it is situated by Dally Road to the west, uh, Green Gate Boulevard to the north, which is going to be under construction here shortly by the city, uh, Dove Parkway to the south, and then the Redwood Development, uh, to the, to the east. Mr. Herr is passing around physical samples for the architectural materials. Um, Steve, you can hold those up one by one, just so I can kind of orient what you're looking at. So that is the fuel center, um, architectural materials. The brick that's on that exhibit has been replaced, so ignore that, um, with that material. And then what Mr. McLaughlin has is the Kroger main store. Um, the updated brick in Mr. Busker's hand is to match the burgundy brick on the main store, so just, I'll talk about that update as you're moving along, but at least kind of direct you on what you're looking at as you're, you're looking at the samples. Uh, so the Kroger site is purchasing 14.2 acres of the overall 17.9 acre parcel. Um, this, uh, parcel that Kroger is purchasing is a little larger than the preliminary plan that showed Kroger is purchasing two out parcels, one for the marketplace, one for the fuel center. Uh, Kroger has opted into combining those into one overall lot, so they just absorb the fuel center, um, in this 14-acre parcel they're purchasing from the, the landowner. Um, their site plan up on the screen, uh, showing they are constructing a 122,910 square foot Kroger fuel, excuse me, Kroger marketplace, and they're also going to have a fuel center with seven, um, pumps, uh, pump stations under a canopy with a kiosk. Um, when looking at their site plan, um, majority of this hasn't changed since you looked at the preliminary plan, uh, but there's going to be four access points to the property, uh, one to the south to Dove Parkway, one on Dally Road that's a ride-in and ride-out only. Uh, Dove, uh, Dally Road also has the median, um, in that section to truly make it a ride-in, ride-out, just for frame of reference. Um, Green Gate Boulevard is being constructed by the city shortly. Uh, their main access drive, um, which is the furthest west on Green Gate Boulevard, um, and then there is a back-of-house access drive, uh, that, that lines up with their east property line. Um, the, um, Planning and Zoning Commission, um, approved a variance for increasing the access drive width to 30 feet, um, across the site. Uh, normal standard is 25 feet max, uh, but the red lines on the plan are the turning exhibits the applicant showed, uh, demonstrating that larger vehicles could not make a 25-foot access drive turn, and that the extra five feet made them clear the paths without overtopping into the landscaping. Um, one note on the plans that staff had, uh, noticed was the proposed traffic signal comment for Dally and Green Gate Boulevard. Uh, the plans did not indicate when that was going to be installed, uh, so the Planning and Zoning Commission made a, uh, recommendation for approval, pending the traffic signal be installed prior to any occupancy for the project. Uh, basically, so when Kroger opens, the traffic signal's functioning. Um, additionally, this site by Kroger, they are only purchasing the 14 acres, not the surrounding outlots. Um, all the outlots have direct access to their site internal through Kroger, uh, so none of the outlots will have driveways on, uh, Dally Road, Dove Parkway, or Green Gate Boulevard. Um, so a cross-access easement is going to need to be granted by Kroger, so all the outlots have the ability to have traffic drive through Kroger site to get to their property. Uh, this exhibit is just showing utilities, uh, how the, uh, applicant's proposing to serve the property. Uh, green sanitary sewer, blue is water, and red is storm sewer. Um, this exhibit's just to show that they are providing, uh, sanitary extension to serve all the outlots. Water's available on, uh, the south, the west, the west and the north, um, and that they're constructing a regional wet pond in the, uh, south, um, east corner of the site that will serve the entire 17 acres. As part of the landscape package, the applicant did a tree, a survey noting all the trees that will be removed for the project. Um, 13 trees will need to be removed as part of the plans. Uh, the 2001 ordinance that adopted the zoning for the property required those 13 trees to be replaced with 13 new trees at a minimum three inches at DBH, uh, which the plan is meeting. And then when looking at the overall landscape plan, uh, there's tons of exhibits in your packet, um, but the highlight is they're planting 396 trees, um, on the property. Um, in, in addition, uh, to the number of trees, um, over a hundred of them are going to screen, uh, this site from the Redwood Apartments, uh, to the east with a, a continuous, um, evergreen hedge row along the property line. Uh, the land, the lighting plan has been provided by the applicant, um, noting that they are going to be installing 38 parking lot lights, uh, with 27-foot poles on two-and-a-half foot concrete risers. Uh, the photometric plan shows no spillover on adjacent properties. Um, the Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed the, uh, lighting plan the applicant had filed The Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed the lighting plan the applicant had filed for a variance to increase the lighting levels underneath the fuel canopy. The Planning and Zoning Commission had denied that variance. The update that went out to you this morning was this photometric plan showing the lighting levels under the fuel canopy being compliant with our code regs, since the variance did not get approved by Planning and Zoning last Monday. When looking at the elevations for the Kroger store here, it is showing they are meeting their material sample board that is in front of you that was approved with the preliminary plan. The building meets the Via Point Overlay District for Architectural Detail and Features. When looking at the fuel center, this was an update that came Friday as well. The brick on the building, a condition of Planning and Zoning's approval was that the brick needed to match one of the primary colors for the Kroger store, but with the condition from City Council's ordinance adopting the preliminary plan, it had to be a real brick, not a modular CMU. So that sample board in front of you this evening is showing the real brick that is color-matched to the CMU on the Kroger store. This is a really good example. I may see if Kroger will let me keep, because I can present this to other outlots as they look to develop, as this is a brick that matches, to give them a physical example of how to meet that condition of preliminary plan. When looking at the site elements, they are proposing to have two outdoor sales areas. One of the areas is on either side of the front entry of the store, at 650 square feet on either side of the front doors. Planning and Zoning Commission had a condition of approval that those outdoor sales areas be physically delineated on the property. That way they don't grow over time. So the applicant is noting to put striping down on the pavement to physically delineate the boundaries. Same thing for the fuel kiosk area. They have some sales areas for snacks, water, firewood, et cetera. The applicant is noting they're going to physically delineate with striping the limits of the sales areas and also just to help coordinate foot traffic for those areas, since it's kind of out within the fuel center itself. When looking at the signage, the Planning and Zoning Commission approved a variance for the signage on the building to exceed the number and size of wall signs for the building. You can see here the main store itself has four signs for Kroger. They have a Starbucks tenant that will be going in the building that will have their own signage. Again, Planning and Zoning approved the signage package. It's up on your screen last Monday. And then when looking at the fuel center, they have six signs, not including the fuel price signs on the, between the kiosk and all four sides of the canopy. Some of those signs are illuminated where they do not face Redwood Apartments. The signs that face Redwood are going to be non-illuminated. One of the things Kroger opted to do to try to make some of the existing conditions, take those into conscious with putting the signage package together. In addition to the signage on the building and the fuel center, there are two monument signs for the property. The first is the Kroger Marketplace sign. Planning and Zoning Commission granted a variance for its size last Monday with some minor conditions on the design of the sign to meet other sections of our code. The applicant had agreed to those. And then the requirement for the Green Gate Plaza identification sign was part of the 2001 ordinance that City Council at the time adopted. So the applicant was required to put this sign on the site. The applicant worked with Planning and Zoning Commission to reduce the sign's height a little bit to be, from a scale of importance, a little smaller than the Kroger sign, since this is just identifying the 17 acres. Nothing in particular on the property. Miscellaneous details the applicant provided are for the propane tanks, air station, the pickup center signage, and then what a typical car corral looks like. Planning and Zoning Commission made a recommendation that the signage area from the car corral be removed. What that'd be physically removing the upper arch while you're doing something to prohibit that signage from sneaking up in the future as Kroger kind of rolls out signage packages, you know, sends their stores all the stuff to put up, just one less thing to say, hey, take this down. And Kroger acknowledged that they would work with this condition and try to figure out how to get that to be removed. So Planning and Zoning Commission last Monday had 10 recommendations for approval to City Council. Kroger had corrected those to the four up on the screen. Two of those can actually be further removed since updates from Friday, but I wanted on the screen here to reflect what was in your packet. Excuse me. The first condition of approval is the cross-access easement be required for out parcel connectivity under the Kroger site, that the traffic signal at Daly and Green Gate Boulevard is installed prior to any building occupancy for the Kroger site. Number three for the brick on the fuel center has been met with a sample that was passed around this evening. And then number four, the signage from the car corrals be removed from the overall design. Kroger has committed to that, but staff had left that as a condition, just to keep it on the record. Your packet had a fifth condition for the lighting levels under the fuel center, which the applicant has updated in my presentation this evening and the updated info that went out this morning. If there's any questions for me, try to give you guys a really quick overview. Spend more time answering questions that you have.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Questions for Mr. Moore. Mr. Shea.
I only have one. Can you go back to the drawing with, just shows the driveways, please? That works. Okay, so here where that entrance is off of the proposed.
Green Gate Boulevard.
Green Gate Boulevard. How do we make sure that we never put a light there, so we don't end up with the same situation we ended up with up here at the other Kroger?
There's no light there.
Okay.
It doesn't meet our access management.
So there'll never be a light there?
It wouldn't be anticipated. The traffic studies don't show it would ever be necessary with the development that's proposed.
Okay.
This, you have a lot more distribution of traffic with this plan. You've got two traffic lights there. You'll have another traffic light at Bucy, so there's three traffic lights in close proximity that'll help you distribute that traffic more than what you have in, you know, Jenner Road.
And now you can go, and you can also go out to the east.
Rear, yes. You can go to Hill Road.
Okay.
So there's, there's a lot more distribution of traffic and ways to get in and out of here as well.
Okay. I just saw it and I had flashbacks, and thank you.
Kind of to piggyback on that, so when I, when I hear there's no, I'll call it exterior access to the outlots, that every, you'll get to all the outlots from within the parking lot, correct?
Correct.
We already allowed the variance or for the reduction in the setback up front. So we're, we've already got a lot of tight parking that's going to go in this particular parking lot. Are you confident that traffic will be able to move freely in the parking lot and to the outlaw businesses under these tight conditions?
I am not a traffic engineer.
Yeah, I'll say you can see the access points on here to the out parcels. So, you know, we've tried to align those everywhere so that they don't cause any issues on the site. And again, I think with having a distributed traffic model here, there's lots of ways in and out that it's going to help with traffic, not all trying to get out in one intersection. And so it's not necessarily a tight parking scenario. It's just, our codes are written to have large parking areas be behind out parcels, so that when you're driving down the street, out parcel's in the front. That didn't work in this case, so that's why you've allowed the parking to be in front of the store with out parcels in front of it. And part of that's because we had a 75-foot setback on this development from 2001, so that's the green space you're going to see. So if you look at that landscaping plan, it's filled with mounding and trees and all that. They're going to hide the parking lot, but that's what the variance from that standard was.
If you, if you take a look at each one of the out parcels, Ms. Amick, there is two curb cuts for each out parcel. Generally speaking, one on the east side, one on the west side. Those curb cuts will lead into where the parking areas will be for those sites. So for the instance of the outlawed by Green Gate and Daly, the building's going to be in the Green Gate-Daly corner, and the parking will wrap probably in like an L shape around it. The one just north of Kroger, the building will probably be bigger and be along Green Gate Boulevard, and the parking will be completely behind it, connecting those two access drives. So this access management plan that Kroger's civil team put together had more of the, the traffic management thought put behind it and where these access drives go. So it was, it was thought out from the beginning with the preliminary plan.
Thank you. Anything else?
I will mention that Kroger, as they discussed previously with preliminary plan, they're, they're pretty anxious to get started on this project. So they would like to close on the property in September and then immediately start construction this fall. And so they've asked that we consider waiving the second and third reading of this ordinance and have it adopted on the first reading.
This is not necessarily for the final development plan, but whose responsibility will it be to market the outlots? Is that Mr. Sherman Geshi's responsibility? It has nothing to do with Kroger at all, correct?
Yes.
So Mr. Sherman Geshi will be responsible for filling those out parcels?
Correct.
Mr. Herr, does the approval of the development plan hinder Kroger from closing? Or can they close and then they are waiting for the development plan to finish?
They would wait until we had a final development plan approval to close. And then we also can't start reviewing their civil plans until the final development plan is approved. And so we can't start reviewing their construction drawings until we get that approval. And those take generally three to four weeks to get all those drawings approved and stamped and ready to start actual construction on the site.
As this is the second request to expedite, is, could it be said to them that maybe more, a little bit more appropriate timing would be lovely? This is the second time they've asked us to.
Did we expedite the one?
No, they didn't ask. They asked previously if we could adopt this in one reading to be able to meet their construction timeline.
Do we have like an expedited fee that we charge for this service?
No, I mean, this is not standard. So standard is you receive a planning and zoning approval of a final development plan, and that is it. Planning and zoning is your final approval authority. Council has requested specifically that properties in this area, they wanted to check to ensure that what was approved of the preliminary plan was also what was being approved of the final development plan.
So we're already doing an extra step. I got you.
Yeah, so this is an extra six weeks built into what our standard process would be. That's actually longer than that.
So if I still don't like the color, there's nothing I can do about it at this point?
What's that?
So if I still don't like the color, there's nothing I can do about it at this point?
The color of the building was approved with your preliminary plan approval, adopting the color palette and building materials. So, so City Council created that color palette with Kroger specifically a month and a half ago and approved it as, as presented. So that color palette not only dictates what Kroger will look like, but all three outlots around it will look like in the future. It's a guaranteed package.
At this stage, you're just confirming that this meets what you previously approved.
Thank you for clarifying. I still think we should get an expedite fee, but yeah.
Something that we want to mandatory.
It's the government.
Anything else?
Motion to move ordinance 25-021 to full council?
So moved.
Take it your and her, too? Okay, I'm sorry. Who made the motion? Mr. Bennett and Mr. McLaughlin? You second it?
It was Mr. Busker, I believe.
Okay, sorry. Thank you.
He approved the motion.
Okay, the motion was made by Mr. Bennett, second by Mr. McLaughlin, to move ordinance 25-021 to full council. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Ms. Amick?
Yes.
Ms. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Busker?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on to old and new business. The first item is OTH 25-012 Charter Review Commission Recommendation. The only outstanding item, Mr. Boggs, was from our previous meeting about how this was going to be filed with the Board of Elections. Can you just kind of reiterate the, it's going to be one, one item? And I had asked the question, I've worked the polls before, and sometimes there's like a gazillion pages, and they try to get voters to read it before they get to the actual voting booth. How will this be displayed for voters? Will it be the entire charter, or will it only be the amendments to the charter?
So there will be a full text of the charter with the amendments in each voting location, but the question on the actual ballot screen will be a summary language.
Okay.
I think last time we did the charter amendment, we had nine different sections that were amended, and we just, it was just a question of shall the charter amendments to Section 1.02, you know, it just listed them. Here we have a few dozen that are being tinkered with in one way or another. So it'll be that summary, which we don't have finalized yet from, from the Board of Elections, but that will be coming in the next couple of weeks. We'll work that out.
All right, thank you. Other questions? Okay, that takes us to OTH 25-013, the Rumke Contract Renewal. Mr. Peoples, would you like to speak to this, please?
I'm sure. At the last meeting, we were, had provided some information to Mr. Bennett for the Sustainability Commission. Mr. Bennett would like to share the feedback from them on the yard waste pickup.
Thank you, Mr. Peoples. Yeah, we had been discussing yard waste collection. Yard waste collection would have been a separate or an additional fee. And in the initial meeting, Mr. Peoples said it was going to be $5 per month for yard waste removal, and that would have been 12 months out of the year. Mr. Peoples was able to go back and work with Rumke to get the cost down to 250 a month. Now, the service would have been a smaller window, would have been every other week. But there would have been a truck through the city every two weeks, and it would only collect the brown yard waste bags. And the committee felt like at this time, maybe a drop site location might be a better alternative than, than this increase citywide to everyone's bill, when it's a service that maybe we would see. And Mr. Peoples, I think you had a statistic. What was the utilization rate on that? It was under 25%?
Yes, I believe so.
Yeah. So based on that, we, the committee discussed that as an option. Felt like it was a future goal to have, potentially, but maybe we're not quite ready for that step in this contract. So maybe by the end of our next contract, we would be ready. But their recommendation was to not move forward with that, but potentially for us to consider maybe, if there's an opportunity for us to find some yard waste drop-off sites or other opportunities for the committee, or the community who would want to participate in that to find a way to participate. So, yeah. So no additional yard waste removal as a separate line item for residents was the committee's recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. And then with that, as we discussed, it was a 13% increase over five years. So it ends up being like a 2.6% increase per year, starting in, actually started on October 1st of this year. And as I discussed last time, we, this original ordinance for this authorized renegotiation to existing contracts. So there's no, there's no authorization needed from council. We will put together some information, get an education going on, you know, what, what our residents are going to be expected to see as far as their bills are going to go.
Thank you, Mr. Peoples.
So we'll get that moving. Appreciate the feedback from, from Sustainability Commission.
I would like to propose then that OTH 25-012 and 013 be removed from the old business list part of the agenda. I think that both of those items, thank you to the, those who were involved in bringing that work forward. So Ms. Pierce, if we can remove those items from the old business. We do have one, let me, before we go there, is there any other new business from council? Okay. The Chamber of Commerce would like to make a presentation to council under the new business. Mr. McLaughlin has asked to be excused for this. to council under the new business. Mr. McLaughlin has asked to be excused for this. Part of the agenda, I believe there's a conflict of interest. So with that said, Ms. Mathias, if you'd like to come to the podium.
Do you need me to sign in?
I'll write you down.
Okay. Thanks.
And just for the record, state your position with the Chamber of Commerce.
My name is Denise Mathias. I am the current chairman of the Board of Directors for the Chamber of Commerce.
Thank you.
And I am one of those things that pops up between Wednesday and Friday, if you were looking for a face to put to that. You know, I stood here three years ago in 2022 and talked about where we were as a chamber. And if I could just take us back for a second. From 2017 to 2022, we really tried to get the chamber organized and eliminate some scope creep that had happened in terms of their responsibilities and what they had signed up for. We relaunched a brand, a vision, a mission, and a website. We grew our membership. We revamped our sponsorship packages. And when we moved the annual dinner to BrewDog, we began to set up, you know, record attendance at that event. And it was really the first time in five years that we had any money in the bank in case of an emergency. But what was going on is we had a part-time person making a salary of $18,000 a year, and four very strong-willed board members who are willing to do unpaid work to keep it up and going. And it had reached a point where we couldn't grow any further, and really that's sort of unsustainable, right? Where you have really three, four part-time working board members to help do the activities. So we came to you, we said we'd really like some money to help us try with a full-time employee, try and see where we can take the chamber and what we can do with it. You guys graciously agreed at that time for a three-year time period. And we used that money to hire a full-time executive director who could grow those relationships in the chamber value. We were hoping to be self-funding by the end of three years. What happened in our first year is we had exponential growth. We had a lot of that running in the first year. The second year, we did a little bit more. And this year, we just can't get the incremental growth going. I'm going to talk a little bit, just briefly, about why some of that is. First of all, we've had turnover again. And what was interesting to me this time around was the first time that I can remember that people from the community reached out and said, hey, I'd actually like to be a part of the chamber and lead this. I can see where to go, which was so cool. And then they found out what we were paying, and they were like, no, thank you. So, and it was like, ah. So we were very lucky that our new director, Elizabeth, started today. And we are very excited for that. She is a Canal Winchester resident, which we think is part of her reason to accept a more modest salary in exchange for this position. But we do lose momentum every time we have to sort of take back and start out. And what I have turned into over the last three years with our agreement with the city is going, no, unless it makes money for us. So we've had great ideas. We had an opportunity to have young professionals, and we had to say that's work with not necessarily income. And it's just a really difficult place to be. We, we don't have the freedom anymore to just like try something and see if it works without this fear of a revenue generation tied to the activity to do that. We would like to absorb young professionals. They're going through a change of leadership. We've always thought it made sense to do it with a chamber, but we said no, knowing that it would be work, not necessarily income. We would really like to take them on. They're very excited to be part of the chamber. We think it's a great way to bring in some younger folks into the chamber as well. And they have ideas. And if we can get the current board to stay as part of the leadership committee and work on that, I think it makes a lot of sense. We've learned that the members' first two years are crucial to retention, and we need to step up our onboarding and assimilation process to avoid losing those. Because typically, if they've been around for five years, we've a really good shot of retaining them, but those first early years are crucial to that. What's coming up as well is the city's bicentennial, right? And so we hope to be part of that planning and part of those activities. And I, again, don't want us to be in the position of having to say no to the city or no to another idea because we can't directly point to it generating a certain amount of revenue. Revenues are down a little bit this year, even though we did increase our membership fee rate. There are multiple factors at play. Our annual sponsorships are declining, so we need to take a look at those and how we present those to our members. Lunch events are down across the industry. So our executive director goes to central Ohio chamber meetings, and it's a big topic among all of them, that lunch, lunches used to be a guaranteed sort of form of revenue, and it's not anymore, not just for us. So everyone is actively seeking a way to come up with something to replace that. We did have a little invoicing snap through this summer. We're a little behind in some of our summer membership dues. We had switched to a new system. It automatically sends stuff up. We learned that there are some people who are very dependent on paper bills. So we're working on getting that straightened out. We're having trouble creating a sustainable, reliable sponsorship for events. So we had big sponsorships, and we heard that we needed to have some small ones. We added some small ones, and then the small ones don't sell, and people only bought the big ones. So we have to be nimble. We have to have the ability to change and adjust. And all of those things take thought, leadership, and constant, you know, checking with the members about what's relevant and what's not. One thing I also learned this year is that we're possibly overlooking municipalities and schools as members. So for example, in Pickerington, both the city and Violet Township are top-tier members with Pickerington. And in Lancaster, different parts of Fairfield County joins. So each department joins with their own group. The schools join, the city joins. And we currently have, I believe, in-kind relationships with those entities at large today. So that's probably something we could look at as well. And then I would lastly say, it's not a one-size-fits-all for our members. So we have a couple of big corporate members who've been amazing and continue to sponsor our bigger events. They come with a plan for a chamber ready at the go, right? The bigger companies do that. Diley Ridge and Canal Banking are the two that come to mind for me. They're very generous. Smaller businesses, which a lot of our members are, are a little different, and it's harder to get them to events. And there are people who need things first thing in the morning and people who can only do evenings. And then there's a steady group who take off from work to come meet with us. So it can't be a one-size solution fits all. So my ask of you today is to consider renewing us just for the next two years so we can get through Elizabeth's transition and we can be great partners to the city for the upcoming bicentennial and take on the young professionals.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mathias. Will you be submitting anything formal to council with your request and your ask?
I can, if you'd like me to. What would you like?
I, I personally, I can, I'm one of seven. I can speak for myself. I like to kind of see a plan. When we visited with you three years ago, or when, when we initiated the contract, you had prepared a proposal talking about your objectives and risks and whatnot, and I think that is, is helpful.
Okay, sure. Anything else?
I, I'm sorry, one more thing. The, the young professionals, I, first of all, I very much support young professionals gathering and, and, you know, mentoring, you know, with others who have been in the business world for a long time. Believe it or not, one, at one time, I was a young professional, and so I participated in some of those groups myself. Is there any formal, like charter or bylaws or mission statement from the young professionals about what it is their mission is or what they would like to achieve as a group?
I personally have not read the document, but I do believe they exist.
Okay.
So I'm happy to get those. And, well, I don't think I should do it. I would make a request of them to do it.
Sure. So, so right now, as I understand it, you are, the chamber has said no to taking on any responsibility for the young professionals, correct?
We've said yes if.
Yes, yeah. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Mathias.
You're welcome.
Okay. I believe we had no other new business that was presented. So when Mr. Shea returns, we will call for adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn the council work session?
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Moore, second by Mr. Busker. Roll call, please.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Busker?
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Ms. Amick?
Yes.
Ms. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Thank you. Timeout is 7:20. Council meeting will start at 7:25. Council meeting will start at 7:25. (end of transcript)
Did you do that haircut yourself?
You're on mic.
Good evening. This is a call in order for the Canal Winchester City Council, August 18th, 2025, meeting. This evening, the pledge of allegiance will be led by Ms. Amick.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Amick?
Present.
Ms. Amis?
Here.
Mr. Bennett?
Here.
Mr. Busker?
Here.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Here.
Mr. Moore?
Here.
Mr. Shea?
Present.
Thank you. Next is approval of minutes. We have minutes 25-030. This is the August 4th, 2025 Appeal Hearing Minutes. Do we have any motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. Moore, second by Mr. Shea. Any discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Ms. Amick?
Yes.
Ms. Amis?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Busker?
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Thank you. Next is minutes 25-031. This is the August 4th City Council Work Session Minutes. Do I have a motion to approve these as well?
So moved. Second.
Motion made by Mr. Moore, second by Mr. Shea. Any discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Ms. Amick?
Yes.
Ms. Amis?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Busker?
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Thank you. And finally, this evening, we have minutes 25-032. These are the full city council meeting minutes from August 4th, 2025. Do we have motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Motion made by Mr. Moore, second by Mr. Shea. Any discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Ms. Amick?
Yes.
Ms. Amis?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Busker?
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Thank you. Also included in your packet this evening are the Madison Township Fire and Police Statistics from July. Also joining us this evening, we have Chief Robinson. Chief, anything you'd like to share or present this evening? We always appreciate your presence, by the way.
Just a couple things. Thank you very much. It's good to be here. Members of council, mayor and staff representing the township this evening, but mainly all the news I have is fire department news, so I guess it'll be quick and easy. First of all, I wanted to just say thank you to the city and Hanum specifically for inviting us to participate in this year's Safety City. It was a great event for us. I know that we have a debrief coming up, but from everything that I've heard, it was a huge success and enjoyed by all, so we were very, very happy to be able to partner with that and look forward to that event in the future as well. Would also like to thank the Canal Winchester schools and all of you that were there for the National Night Out this past previous week. It was a heck of an event that was put on. I know there was some media folk that were around at the different ones, and the feedback I got was that this was one of the grander ones and one of the bigger ones. So congratulations to everybody that was part of that, and thank you again for being involved in that. Anything that we can partner with, you all in the city, the schools, just to get out there and engage our community is certainly something that we are willing to do. So finally, I just wanted to extend an open invitation to everyone that we will again be handing, holding our annual 9/11 ceremony on September 11th at Mott's Military Museum. It'll start at 8:00 a.m. Gates will open at 7:00, so I would love to see you there to help commemorate that. And that's all I have this evening, unless you have any questions for us.
Thank you, as always.
Pleasure being here. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief. That'll bring us to public comment. We did receive public comments submitted online by one resident regarding sidewalks and gender. Is there anyone present this evening who would also wish to make public comment? Okay, seeing none. We will move on to reports of city staff and officials. We'll start with mayor's report. The birthday boy.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett.
You can leave that out of the record, by the way, Jordan.
That was official.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Bennett. And yes, please leave that out of the record. I would like to announce that the Franklin County Board of Commissioners Health and Human Service Mobile Unit, this unit is designed to bring community services directly to the community. It provides residents with access to benefits enrollment, resource navigation, and considerations to support programs, meeting people where they are. This unit will be in Canal Winchester. Human resurfaces at 80 Convenient Way on Tuesday, September 2nd, from 12:30 to 2:30 p.m. The public's invited to attend and learn more about mental health resources in the county. This part of Franklin County's Wellness Within Reach Program. I'd also like to announce that we've been doing some tours through the OP Chaney Project. It's been quite fun. We brought some state leaders in along with state reps and some senators. We had, last Friday, we had Christie Ward, the mayor from Lockborn, Mayor Angie Kurt from O'Betts, along with Stacy Bomas from here in Canal Winchester, Meredith Lawson-Rose, our state rep, Michelle Reynolds was there, Sheriff Baldwin from Franklin County, Sheriff Lait from Fairfield, along with Sergeant Strawn and Matt and myself. Todd Weiser's been running these tours, and today we took the mayor from Sidney, Ohio, Mayor Barhost. It was quite interesting because there is a big machine up in the top of the mill that was made in Sidney, Ohio. So Todd had, Mr. Weiser had made some pictures and framed them for the mayor to take back to his historical society. And we had Mayor Westcamp from Groveport, city of Groveport, there today as well. That's all I have. If you have any questions for me, I'm glad to take them.
I have one question for the mayor. How old are you today?
That is not a fair question, councilman, but I will tell you, I'm 63 years young today.
Gosh, I would have never guessed that. Happy birthday, sir.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Aren't you going to give me your famous line?
Oh, I certainly hope that I live to your age.
There it is.
Fair enough. Keep working out in that gym in the morning. I'm sure you'll make it.
Trying, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Appreciate it.
We'll move to city administrator, Mr. Peoples.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. I do not have anything to add to my written report.
Thank you. Mr. Peoples, the public comment we received this evening about sidewalks, I didn't know if you'd had a chance to review that or consider it.
It feels to me like it's north of 30, about 33 Winchester Pike.
Okay.
So I will respond to the resident just to get a little better indication of where, just the way it was described with the number of Coda stops, it seems to indicate it was that way.
Okay.
Per my own quick search of the voter registration records, this person lives in the city of Columbus.
Okay. Respond out and make sure that that's a very common confusion.
Well, given that, I mean, while it may not have been an actual resident or something we can control within our boundary, I do know that, you know, I think we have a bus stop for Route 25 that goes in behind, I think it's Apprentice School.
Yes.
And I have always sort of been curious how pedestrian traffic would navigate to that stop from gender. I don't know if there's sidewalk access to that stop, but maybe something in the...
It's from the saddle. So we added the trail on the east side of Gender Road. You can cross at Canal Street on crosswalks, on sidewalk.
Is there a sidewalk in front of Wendy?
There is, yes. On the east side of Apprentice School. On the west side, it is intermittent through there.
Okay. Great. Then, no issue. We'll move on. Any questions for Mr. Peoples?
Mr. Peoples, could you provide an update on the community partner consultant's work and when we might see the report for that?
Sure. I do not have a timeframe on the report. I will try to find out what the schedule was, but the, I know that we provided them with some background information on those, on our community partner organizations, and the consultant has been reaching out to those, to those members.
Do you know if all of the interviews have been completed or if that's still work in progress?
I do not.
Okay.
We can get an update on that.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Bennett.
I believe that work product was due, I think we were talking, targeting the end of September.
It was, but we did, we had a contract language issue that delayed the implementation of the signature executed contract, so I think that might have pushed that a touch.
Okay. All right. Fairfield County Sheriff, report. Sergeant Strawn.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Good evening, council. Another thing I have is I submitted my statistics for last month to you and a letter, just kind of giving you updates on some of the issues we've been having in the city. But that's all that I have, unless you have any questions for me? Yes, ma'am?
Just a trivial, I have had two residents in the past month call me to complain about the number of cars parking in front of the smoke store in Kroger because it's blocking the, like, but it's a constant. If you drive past there, they're just parking there in front of the store and leaving their car in the driveway. So if they get a chance, just...
Yep.
Go ahead.
No, I just noticed that that arrest made on your report, that's the highest number I've ever seen. Is it just getting busier or...?
I think maybe just summer months, sometimes. Things are a little busier, people more out and about. Usually those numbers will kind of dwindle down a little bit in the winter months.
Gets cold, people don't come out.
They don't want to come outside and commit crimes.
Sergeant Strawn, I'm not sure if this is a topic for you or maybe, maybe you and Ms. Woodruff to potentially. I, you know, I know we see as members of the community, people posting their Ring camera videos online all the time, or at least on social media. I don't know if there's a way to maybe include in the mayor's report, just, you know, call residents to action to say, you know, listen, if you have something on your Ring video, submit it to this email address or just a way to make sure that our community knows, like, if you see something, say something, and here's how you say something.
It would help us a lot, just, right at 6:00, I sat on a roll call with my night shift guys, and they were kind of complaining about, like, they follow some of the social media pages here, and like, it's frustrating because these, those put it on social media, but they won't call us.
Yeah.
Or they'll say, hey, I caught somebody at 3:00 in the morning doing this. Call us. So we can, you know, we are trying to, I mean, notice I put that car out. I kind of powered through a couple of nights last week and come in and worked some night shift hours. Madison Township Police has been sending cruisers over. We did a couple of nights with some really saturation patrols in the subdivisions. I know the two nights I come in, I put over 100 miles on my cruiser just driving these subdivisions, trying to come up with something.
Yeah. Well, and just to be clear, I...
It would help us so much.
The request is not for the sheriff's office to do more patrolling or question the effect of the, you guys or your commitment to the community. It is really just how do we foster that sort of understanding for community members to just immediately know, if I have something, here's where it goes. Because I know some videos can be too big to email, so I don't know if we need a drop off, like, I don't know what the process is for getting large video files.
A lot of, I mean, if we just take the calls, we put them on...
Yeah.
Some drives or whatever to download, but that would be something I'd have to, I don't know if we get them to pass them on, if they do want to get them on our website, I have to check onto that.
Yeah.
On Facebook page.
There's an easier way for us to, you know, whether it's the mayor's newsletter, just saying, like, you know, if you have something in your camera, here's where, please send it right away. It's really more calling the residents to action than the sheriff's office. It's Michael.
Yep.
Because I agree with you, we see it too frequently on social media and it doesn't make it, it doesn't filter its way down to your office. Sorry. Not trying to... Anyone else? Thank you, Sergeant.
You're welcome.
Law Director, Mr. Boggs.
Nothing to report this evening, but I am happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions from council? All right. Nope. Thank you, Mr. Boggs. Finance Director? Any, anything to report on behalf of Ms. Jackson, Mr. Peoples?
Not at this time.
Okay. Thank you. Development Director, Mr. Hare.
Did you find that balance out?
I was going to do that when the ordinance was read, but I can get that for you. In the financial show, it is, it is about $450,000. I do know that that is not quite 100% available, the, some of the bed tax fund allocations are still held in that account, but $450,000 is a, is a good balance for that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So, Mr. Peoples, it sounds like if somebody had to paint a fire truck, though...
I don't think that would be fully, be able to go out of, because I said there's, there's stuff that needs to be taken out of there.
Oh, okay.
I did, I factored into minus 100, not anymore.
120? Okay. That's fine. We'll work it. We'll work on it. We'll work on it. Development Director, Mr. Hare.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. We did have the application deadline for planning and zoning today. Not a lot on the agenda, but we do have some changes to the Ohio Health Facility, some architectural changes to the exterior to that. That facility opened on August 12th, so it's open and operational now, so a good addition there for the community. Hopefully, none of you have had to visit yet, with the exception of the ribbon cutting. And then we have another ribbon cutting on Wednesday for distributor wire and cable on Robinette Way in Canal Point, and so hopefully some of you will be able to attend that. The Chamber is hosting that ribbon cutting there. And then Champion Strapping also in Canal Point on Bucy Road will be having a ribbon cutting on September 10th. And so I can share details of that as well, if any of you would like to attend. But beyond that, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to entertain us.
Anything for Sir Hare? All right. Seeing none. Thank you, Mr. Hare. We'll move to resolutions. We have Resolution 25-041. Clerk, could you read the resolution?
A resolution to amend the rules of the Canal Winchester City Council.
Thank you. The sponsor's Ms. Amis.
Motion to adopt Resolution 25-041 with the modification, section 8B, 1C, removing one line.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Amis, second by Mr. Moore. Any discussion? Roll call?
Ms. Amis?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Ms. Amick?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Busker?
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Thank you. Next is Resolution 25-042. Ms. Pierce, could you read that resolution?
A resolution to authorize the mayor administrator to enter into a financial support agreement with the Canal Winchester Historical Society.
Thank you. And the sponsor for this is Ms. Amick.
Thank you. I move to adopt Resolution 25-042.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Amick, second by Mr. Busker. Any discussion? Roll call?
Ms. Amick?
Yes.
Mr. Busker?
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Abstain.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Ms. Amis?
Abstain.
Mr. Bennet?
Yes. Next is Resolution 25-043. Clerk, could you read this ordinance as well, please?
A resolution indicating what services the city of Canal Winchester will provide to 111.2 acres of land, more or less, for the annexation known as the Canal Family Farms, annexation by David Hodge, agent for the petitioners.
Thank you. The sponsor for this is Mr. Moore.
Motion to adopt Resolution 25-043. Second.
Motion made by Mr. Moore, second by Mr. Shea. Any discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Ms. Amick?
Yes.
Ms. Amis?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Busker?
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Thank you. We'll move to ordinances. On for third reading this evening, we have ordinance 25-019. Ms. Pierce, could you read this ordinance?
An ordinance to amend the 2025 appropriation notice, number 24-033, amendment number four.
Thank you. The sponsor for this is Ms. Amis.
Motion to adopt ordinance 0, I'm sorry, 25-019. There we go.
Yeah. Second. Motion made by Ms. Amis, second by the chair. Any discussion?
Mr. Bennett, just a reminder that it included the $100,000 for the Historical Society.
I can make a motion, I can't vote.
I just wanted to make sure it was a reminder, so, because we did add it.
Good looking out.
Thank you, Mr. Peoples. Any additional discussion? Roll call?
Ms. Amis?
Abstain.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Busker?
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Abstain.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Ms. Amick?
Yes.
Thank you. We'll move to ordinances on for first reading this evening. We have ordinance 25-021. Ms. Pierce, could you read this ordinance?
An ordinance approving the final development plan for Kroger as part of the Green Gate Plaza Plan Development.
Thank you. Chair is the sponsor. Pretty sure. Yep. I'm the sponsor. So I would like to make a motion to suspend the rules requiring a second and third reading for ordinance 25-021. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made by the chair, second by Mr. Moore. Any discussion? Okay. Roll call?
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Ms. Amick?
Yes.
Ms. Amis?
Yes.
Mr. Busker?
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Thank you. Now I will ask for the approval of ordinance 25-021. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made by the chair, second by Ms. Amis. Any discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Ms. Amis?
Yes.
Mr. Busker?
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Ms. Amick?
Yes.
Thank you. That brings us to council reports. First item is we have a fun Tuesday, September 2nd meeting, thanks to the outstanding Labor Day celebration that'll be happening that week. So council and work session will be Tuesday, September 2nd, with work session beginning at 6:00 and full council following at 7:00. Then we'll be back to our regularly scheduled Monday programming, September 15th, with council at, I'm sorry, work session at 6:00 and council at 7:00. We have a committee of the whole on the calendar for Monday, September 19th.
29th.
Or 29th, sorry, the 29th. You know how the chair loves a good meeting, so we'll probably find something to put on that agenda.
Lucas was already looking at...
That's right.
Essentially, zoning code.
Zoning code review. Yeah.
So, so you don't even get to have it.
No, we're definitely going to have it, but Mr. He's driving the schedule.
Mr. Hare gets to.
Yeah. It's fine. We have... Yeah, it's fine. We have 2025 Council Connect meeting dates. Our next Council Connect is September 17th. It's a Wednesday from 6:30 to 7:30. Ms. Amick and Mr. Busker, again, are making a return appearance.
Back by popular demand.
The dynamic duo.
Yeah, dynamic duo. So there is currently a spot open if anyone else has time, would like to join. We'll move to committee reports. We'll start with Human Services. Mr. Moore?
That's my mistake.
I was like, I'm pretty sure that's, Mr. Shea.
I mean, that happened once. We can abandon. So very short update. Start of school year, they're preparing to kick off Feeding Our Future program to support students' need. Applications are available on the website through the school, or they can call in, and Human Services can email or mail one to the parent. Applications for tools for school are still being accepted, so if anybody needs any extra, needs school supplies, please reach out to Canal Winchester Human Services. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shea. CWICC, Ms. Amick.
Thank you. I have nothing new to report. Our next meeting won't be until October 29th.
Thank you. CWJRD, Ms. Amos and Mr. Moore.
Our next meeting is this Thursday at 6:30. Work session followed by the actual meeting at 7:00. You didn't know that, did you?
No.
Maybe next year you'll know about that. Other than that, football is in full swing. That's really the news right now. They had their first game, first games this week, and we've got some registrations open currently. And other than that, it's relatively smooth sailing.
Okay. Thank you. Destination Canal Winchester, Mr. Busker.
Yes, this Sunday is Summer Sundays. It's Stradely Park from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. Oxbow String Company will be playing, so we'd love to have the families come out and enjoy that. The Farmer's Market continues on Saturdays from 9:00 to noon, and the Labor Day Festival is looking for volunteers for the information booth as well as event sponsors. If anyone is interested, they can reach out to the Labor Day Committee. And if you forget any of the dates that we talk about during our meeting, you can always look them up on the Destination Canal Winchester app.
Way to go.
Thank you, Mr. Busker. CW, Chamber of Commerce, Mr. McLaughlin.
So if you haven't heard, the Chamber of Commerce has found a new executive director. I think it was, it was posted about a week and a half ago, but Elizabeth Wood was chosen or hired on, I should say, as the new executive director. We're really excited about that hire, where she thinks she's going to be a fantastic fit for the role, and looking forward to working with her and seeing how she's able to grow the chamber even further. And also want to thank Claire Chapman for a little over a year of service at the Chamber. She did a great job growing the Chamber, and she will be missed, and we really appreciate everything she's done. Second, I just want to do a quick plug for the Home Sweet Home Show that is happening on Saturday, September 20th. Registration's open for vendors and for sponsorships. If you go to canalwinchester.com, click on that event, you'll be able to get the dropdown to be able to sponsor or register as a vendor. And that would be, it's from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. on September 20th in Stradely Park, and that's in partnership with the Canal Winchester Farmer's Market. So it should be a great time. Thank you.
Thank you. Finally is the Sustainability Commission report. We, as a group, met on Wednesday, August 6th. A chair and vice chair were selected. They are going to begin working together to formalize a future agenda for the group. The group is already, is going to be working with Ms. Woodriff to kind of outline maybe some social practices and policies that they would like to, they would like to start spreading the word about some things. So if, so we're going to work with the city and work on how we can sort of, um, sharing that message citywide. I don't think there are any other takeaways from that meeting. They did discuss the Rumpke contract, like I shared earlier, and we shared that feedback with Mr. Peoples early. Our next meeting is September 3rd at 6:30.
Can you share who the chair is?
Cindy, I always, yeah, I always butcher her last name. I was like, oh, Cindy Collechi. The group selected her as the chair, and then Dana Rains is the vice chair.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Any other comments from council? Any other items for old or new business?
I have one. Some of the business owners on the near block of West Waterloo have come to me about cars being parked in front of their businesses and never moving that are being dropped there for repair. For example, there was one business that does a lot of weekend traffic, and right in front of their shop all weekend was a van parked that didn't move since Friday, and they weren't real thrilled about it. So I just thought I would throw that out there. I don't know what we can do about it, if there's any parking restrictions on that stretch of Waterloo. If maybe it's time to put two-hour signs up there, what we can do. But that's been, I know it's been an ongoing issue. We all know where it's coming from. I know you all have been working on it, but it's still an issue.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shea. Thank you for sharing that with all of council. Any other items for old or new business?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Amos, second by Mr. Shea. Any discussion? Roll call.
Ms. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Shea.
Yes.
Ms. Amick.
Yes.
Mr. Bennett.
Yes.
Mr. Busker.
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Thank you. Timeout is 7:55.